Evening, we're going to call the, to order the regular December 2025 meeting of the Royal Oak Planning Commission to order, and we'll start by introducing the folks up here if we start down here to my right.
Brian Cooper.
Charlotte Douglas.
Joseph Murphy, Director of Planning.
Josh Markham, City Attorney's Office.
Woody Gantina, City Commissioner.
Jim Allison.
Mike Fournier, Mayor.
And I'm Gary Casada, the Chairperson. All right, the first order of business is the approval of the November 11th meeting minutes. I wasn't here, but if the other Commissioners who were here had a chance to look at these minutes, do they have any comments or corrections or questions or a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Cooper. Any further discussion of approval of the November 11th meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor of adopting the minutes, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is adopted, the meeting minutes are approved. All right, next order of business, well, first of all, does anybody need to add anything to the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to come and speak on a non-agenda item, then now is the time to come on up and address the Planning Commission. All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment and we'll move on to new business. First thing we're going to look at is a public hearing for SB 25-12-14 at 2800 West 14 Mile. Mr. Murphy, please introduce this project to us.
This is the 11-acre site located at the northeast corner of 14 Mile in Coolidge. It's in the General Industrial Zoning District. Several months ago, there was a, the petitioner was present in front of you, they were requesting a conditional rezoning to general business, so from general industrial to general business, and that was to allow for about 100,000 square foot Kroger retail store with a drive-through facility and a filling station. And the petitioner did ultimately withdraw that application. They submitted a new application for you to consider tonight, and they're requesting to have the property rezoned to planned unit development, or PUD. And that's to accommodate same-size Kroger store and a filling station. It's also to allow for an apartment building on the site at the north portion of the property, and I'll bring up the drawing for you. So the Kroger store, filling station, and north of the Kroger store, location for a four-story multifamily apartment building. Again, they're seeking a planned unit development approval, and that has specific criteria that's outlined in the zoning ordinance, which is listed for you on pages nine, excuse me, 10 through 11. And so the Planning Commission needs to utilize that criteria when determining to make a recommendation on this proposal to, that ultimately goes to the City Commission. One factor that, which is included in what you're to consider is that the requested zone or planned unit development should be consistent with the goals, policies, and future land use map of the city's master plan. This site has a future land use designation in the master plan of Activity Center. And I want to read that Activity Center description from the master plan, because I think it's relevant to what you're considering. So this place type is a designation for residents throughout the city characterized by a very active, multi-block main street where other significant commercial spaces, supported by multifamily housing within the Activity Center and surrounding corridors. Uses include a full range of commercial, retail, food and beverage, institutions, office and offices serving large segments of the city and surrounding communities. This place type consists of medium-scale, multi-story attached buildings and occasional large special-purpose buildings. Parking is typically handled on-street, in structured garages and surface parking lots behind buildings. So obviously, the master plan is adopted, as we just had a special meeting prior to this to interview firms to help us with writing a new zoning ordinance. That master, the future land use designation, has not yet realized with changes to the city's zoning ordinance. So that's definitely something to consider when you're reviewing the request for a PUD. The PUD process does allow the city to consider any land use, but the application must demonstrate that they meet all the PUD criteria. This includes a recognizable and material benefit to the community and users of the actual project itself. A reminder that in October of 2022, the City Commission did adopt Community Benefits Guidelines, and those should be utilized when considering this PUD request. The petitioner is proposing to demolish the existing building, and again, as stated, construct a slightly larger than 100,000 square foot Kroger retail store. That'll have the sale of prepackaged alcohol, it'll have a drive-through facility for its pharmacy, and it'll have outdoor sales in front of the building. It's a large-scale retail establishment which is currently allowed as a special land use with the current zoning designation of general industrial. They're also proposing to have a fuel station closer to the intersection of 14 Mile and Coolidge. That's 10 double-sided fuel pumps with some adjacent outdoor sales, display and sales items. Fuel stations are not, they're neither a permitted nor a special land use in the General Industrial Zoning District. So again, the existing zoning district does not allow for the fuel station. They're also proposing, as noted, the four-story apartment building which will include 85 dwellings. That particular use is neither a permitted nor a special land use in the General Industrial Zoning District. Hence, you package up all those uses. They have identified that they are seeking a special exception to the approval process to allow that collection of uses to occur at the site, hence the PUD request. You'll see that the majority of the parking for the Kroger store is located between the building and the front property line along 14 Mile Road. Large-scale establishments under our current zoning ordinance requirements, they're required to have a minimum number of parking spaces and a maximum number of parking spaces. So they're required to have no less than one parking space for 300 square feet of usable floor area. And they're also allowed not to have more parking space than one parking space for 250 square feet of usable floor area. So they're providing 316 parking spaces, specific or surrounding the Kroger, the proposed Kroger establishment. The minimum number that they're required to provide is 314, so they're slightly above that minimum, they're certainly below the maximum that's allowable. The four-story apartment building, as we know, based on a lot of the conversations that we've had recently, requires two off-street parking spaces per dwelling. The parking spaces that are located adjacent to the apartment, proposed apartment building, they total 126, so that comes out to a ratio of 1.5 to 1.5 parking spaces per dwelling, less than the two required under our current ordinance requirements. There are numerous other deviations from zoning, the zoning ordinance standards with regard to landscaping, the facade of the building, placement of the building, et cetera, et cetera. There's a very long table that if you'd like, we can elaborate further upon, but that table is located on pages eight through nine. So this is a public hearing, and afterward you do have the opportunity, several different choices to select from. You can postpone it to a further, a future meeting, you can recommend preliminary approval, and that entitles the petitioner to an acknowledgement of the use and the design concept which they provided for you today, and that gives them six months to return for final approval. Or if you feel comfortable, you can recommend final approval with the contingencies that staff has listed, or those that you think needed to be, need to be modified or added, or you can certainly deny the request. But you are ultimately making a recommendation that goes, since this is a request to rezone the property, it's a change to the city's zoning ordinance, the map within the ordinance, it's a recommendation that you're making to the City Commission. A reminder for yourself and for the public that a PUD or Planned Unit Development rezones the property, it has a development agreement associated with it that requires the developer to construct exactly what they were approved for, very specific written terms with regard to that. And it also recognizes all the deviations, like the ones I had referenced in the table on pages 10 through 11. It acknowledges or memorializes all of those deviations in that agreement. So I'll zip through the site plan itself. I know that the petitioner has worked very hard to prepare a presentation for you tonight. I'll try not to steal a lot of their thunder. But they are proposing to retain the existing entrance and exit off of 14 Mile Road, as well as the northern entrance and exit off of Coolidge. There is an existing entrance to the site right now, an additional one on Coolidge, that would be removed and be replaced a little further north. And I'm going to zoom in on the image on the screen. The blue identifies the travel path of a semi-truck or a fuel truck that's circulating through the site, but you'll see the location of the store, the entrance and exit points, as well as the location of the fuel pumps. The one unique thing that perhaps the petitioner can clarify is they're proposing an apartment building further on the, on the north, northern portion of the site, and I'll try and get to that page. So the site plan highlights the footprint of that four-story apartment building. It does not, the petitioner has not shown on their drawings that it's, they're separate pieces of property, and they haven't given us any indication as to whether this development will be governed as a site condominium, meaning there'll be common elements that they share like drive aisles, but technically, there'll be separate pieces of property, we'll say the Kroger property and the apartment property. So I think that's an excellent question that should be directed to the petitioner, because right now, the actual, the apartment building doesn't have frontage on the public right away. So if the petitioner does plan on splitting them off, they'll have to identify how that's going to be accomplished, and also the easement that's shared with the property owner directly to the east of the proposed Kroger building. There's a shared easement, and I think there's also shared easement on the north side as well. So those are important questions, and perhaps the petitioner already has some of that in mind. The petitioner has provided a wide variety of items for your review, they've given you a set of drawings, a signed package which shows you all of their signage as well. They've provided for you written statements as to how they feel that they meet the criteria established under the ordinance for how you review planned unit developments, and they have also provided a traffic impact study. So similar to a prior development several months ago, if you believe that this project should move forward to the City Commission, or even before it moves forward to the City Commission, you have the ability to require the developer to have a peer review of this particular traffic study. So similar to what occurred several months ago, and it's warranted to have traffic engineers, separate traffic engineers review this traffic impact study that was created by a separate group of traffic engineers, and conduct that peer review to make sure that all the technical language that's provided and analysis is far beyond our ability to provide you with any constructive comments. But having a peer review would be very beneficial if you feel it's necessary and if you feel the project should move forward. So I'll stop short of that, I think there are probably questions that'll lead to some other answers, and most certainly, the petitioner's presentation will be beneficial to you.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Murphy from the Commissioners before we move forward? All right, seeing none, I'm going to ask the petitioner to come forward, introduce your team, and tell us why you're entitled to the relief you're seeking.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Dennis Cowan, I'm here on behalf of Symmetry Management, which is the owner of the property, and will be the one that will be constructing the various elements of the property and will, in essence, exert control over the development. So, as has been referenced, the team was here back in July sunset time following that meeting. We've listened to you and others, we've reviewed the plans, and we've revised them. We think today, we have a better project than we did several months ago, and we hope this is a project that will meet with your thoughtful consideration to allow us to move on to the City Commission for their PUD review. I'm going to give a brief overview, and then we've got several members of the team who want to address you, because they all are going to hit on important topics relative to this development. First, Frank Jarboe, who is here, and he is the owner of Symmetry Management, and then we have from Atwell Engineering, Jamie Antonovich, and from Moody Nolan, the architect, Tammy George, to talk about, primarily about the changes, because I believe everyone was at the meeting except Mr. Casada, and I know he's diligently reviewed all the information, so we know he's up to speed. But I think to know what the changes were in particular, I think are important, we have some sketches that show that. Then from the Kroger company, Cam Barrett, and then with respect to the multifamily, Krieger Klad Architects represented by Ray Phillips. So I think the most important thing for us to look at tonight is what's been the major change, and the major change was the addition of the 85-unit apartment building, and also some, 85-unit apartment building, including some of the community benefits would flow overall from the development, some changes we've made, particularly in landscaping and green space. We've chosen a different route. Originally, we had conditional rezoning because we had only two uses, the fueling station and the Kroger store. We now added a residential component. We think the PUD is best suited to handle that, given the fact that this is also a larger development which many believe the PUD is intended for. But as has been noted by Mr. Murphy, we find ourselves in a little bit of a zoning twilight zone, I call it, because we have a new master plan, which we're judging part of this by, but we're using an old, the current zoning code which has industrial standards, which we know are not going to be the new standards, because we're not going to have this classified as industrial property anymore, it's in the Activity Center. So while we're compared for purposes of zoning and variances and things and deviations to the industrial standard, we know that a brighter day is coming with the information that we have, and what Mr. Murphy read was, it's a 91-word summary of what the Activity Center is all about, so that's the guidance that we have. We have a little more than that, there's a couple sections, as you know, because you approved it, the master plan that covers the Activity Center, but that, those 91 words are core, and we believe we are compliant with that intent and spirit, because there is reference to significant commercial spaces supported by multifamily housing, and that's exactly what we accomplish here with this new revised plan. In terms of community benefits, and I sent a letter, and I'll just highlight a couple things, because others who are far more intelligent than I will talk about energy efficiency and things of that nature. But we do have energy efficiencies that will be part of it, we have six to 10 electric charging stations which will be on-site, and they can, they're going to be located in a place where they can both be used by residents and also by Kroger customers or employees. A very important issue, because we're talking about the elimination of 210,000 square feet of industrial space, which is a goal that you all have, to transition from industrial space. But Kroger requires, as part of their efforts with respect to demolition and construction, waste reduction, they have a minimum of 90% of that waste recycled. I want you to think about that for a second. It's 210,000 square feet, most of which is not going to go in a landfill, and I think that's an outstanding achievement for anybody, let alone a site this large and this complex. There's no stormwater management on-site today, not, there will be. We have an above-ground retention basin next to the apartment building, we have underground detention on the Kroger site, and we also have a rain garden that's on the west side of the property. We've made extensive changes to landscaping. The city generally requires 10% of lot area to be landscaped, we have almost 20, significantly more than the plan you saw before. We have over two acres of green space on the site. We have 99 trees, currently, there's seven on the site. We have 522 shrubs and bushes we're going to put on the site. There's 51 trees on the perimeter, so this will be a significantly greenscape that won't even, right now, we have a pavement desert, and that's all going to change. Kroger will talk about its diversity, equity and inclusion program, and about what they do with employees, as well as, I think the letter stated, and I'll let them talk more about it, they are definitely committed nonprofit community funding organization. They also have a zero hunger, zero waste program, which is very significant. This development will create about 200-plus construction jobs and about 130 jobs at the store and the fueling station. These will be good-paying, safe and full-time jobs as your guidelines request, and it will be an economic engine for this particular area. So what do we get out of this project? We get the elimination of 210,000 square feet of industrial space and the associated industrial uses. That will, in essence, be gone forever. We get a national retailer, Kroger, which already has a store in the community and is very successful, and well-liked by the consumers. We get a new multifamily, and as you know, there's a, this is consistent, there's a lot of multifamily to the east of this project, but none in this particular area, so we'll be breaking new ground. So we have an opportunity to realize many of the changes that you want to see through the new master plan, and also the community benefits that will be realized. Without this project, none of the community benefits I mentioned or others mentioned, who we'll talk about, will be realized. So we respectfully request your thoughtful consideration again this evening for this project. We stand ready to answer any questions after the presentation is done, or when you begin your discussion, and we look forward to your recommendation for, to go, for us to be able to go to the City Commission for the next step. And I thank you, and I'll call Frank Jarboe up now.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Frank Jarboe from Symmetry Management and Ronis Construction Group. My, both of my firms, Symmetry Management's been in the community for over six years. Ronis Construction Group, which is founded by my late partner Bernie Ronis, has been in the community for over 30 years, and our office is literally right on Delamere Court, down the street from here. Thank you for the opportunity to represent this project. What we've come to, you know, we've, we've listened to exactly what, what we hope to find as a community benefit throughout the project. You know, I can speak about the multifamily component to this project. One thing that, when we went back, we said to our team, there's something missing here, there's something more that we could possibly do. We tried to fit some retail up against the road, and we just couldn't fit it with the parking that was there. The multifamily component came in with that appendage that was basically just going to be vacated and left for parking. Instead, we, you know, we came up with the 85 units, and now furthermore, that we've had even more discussion, we're committed to looking at a had even more discussion, we're committed to looking at a affordable housing component to it, and also maybe a workforce housing. We haven't dialed down to the exact nature of those two, but we hope to have that on, when we go to, you know, if we're approved, to go into Planning Commission, but we are committed to that. There is another component to this, too. Obviously, I mean, you talk about a 210,000-square-foot building. When we purchased this, we didn't purchase it for the building, we more or less purchased it for the land, because we knew there was something there. But when we, when Kamau vacated, we, we received letters of intent from multiple different manufacturers and some industrial users. Some wanted warehousing, some wanted distribution, and we still have that today. We have a couple of users that, you know, want to backfill this with the, you know, whether it be, you know, an industrial use or some type of robotics company that they, a couple that we have. But we know there's something there to the future of this area. It may not fit the exact ordinance that you have today, but we would hope that you would take a different look at this and how we presented it, to hopefully be the catalyst moving forward on the rest of the 14-mile corridor. I mean, I'd like to see, my office is there, I drive past it every single day. We talked about two as well as possibly, you know, what can we do here to help, you know, maybe start some community, another community benefit, and one of them is giving to the, giving to a fund that would help for...
The kilowatt?
The kilowatt, sorry, lost the words. Kilowatt Fund. So we're committed to today, to me as the developer, this is not Kroger, I'm speaking on behalf of Kroger, speaking on behalf of me, myself, donating $25,000 to that kilowatt fund to get that started up in the community. I know that's something that the city has been looking forward to do, and with this component, too, as well, coming off the grid, this is a primary-use power building that would help tremendously on the power grid for the city. But we're here, we have the rest of the team here that would like to display, call Atwell and Tammy up for some more presentations.
Jamie Antonovich with Atwell, engineer for the project. Is there some slide, can pull up? Should be B, the ones I sent earlier.
Would that be the changes to the mixed-use presentation?
The, looks like they may have been relabeled.
Yeah.
Yeah, try, yeah, try that one.
That'll work.
Yep, that works. So I will kind of point out some of the items that have changed from our initial submit to now, address some of the items raised in the review letter, and then, you know, be available for any site-related questions. So just what I'm highlighting here, side by side of what was submitted previously, what we have submitted now, we've added, you know, more protected pedestrian route from 14 Mile to the store, added additional islands to comply with the ordinance and, and the spacing required in the parking. We did shift some parking from the Coolidge side internal, also provided some protection in anticipation of, you know, some separation between people that need to get to the apartments and then the Kroger customers. And then, you know, widened out the green space on the front to also comply with the ordinance requirements. Then just on the northern portion, as already kind of discussed, as highlighting, as Frank noted, it was hard to determine a use initially, kind of had remaining pavement, green space up there, and now we have the apartment building in that space. So just a further kind of note, the landscaping changes, just highlight the central items that were added. And then, as kind of Dennis was talking about, 50 additional trees from that cement, 57 additional shrubs, this is just in the Kroger area, and then an increase of about 60% to the landscaped area. And then we did add, we'll touch on it a little bit in the building modifications, foundation plantings on the Coolidge side, and then additional plantings within the sidewalk in the front of the store. And then just to highlight, you know, the residential now, we have a, you know, stormwater feature there, that'll be green space, you know, several 32 additional trees and foundation plantings around that building. And then just to focus more on the pedestrian amenities, I already mentioned the connection to 14. We had initially planned and continue to plan direct connection to Coolidge. There are bike racks for the Kroger store, and then we are adding a bench to that bus stop that is right on our front of John 14 Mile. The stormwater improvements, as noted, you know, this is quite an old development, has nowhere near what would be required now, so we would comply with current ordinance to provide both for Kroger and the apartment building retention of stormwater, you know, to alleviate burden on the system for the city. We're also proposing a rain garden along the Coolidge side, which I think we'll touch on later, can also include some pedestrian amenities to it as well. And then, you know, on, on the parking counts for the apartments, based on, as noted, two parking per unit, we are light. Looking at other projects the team has done in the area, including Elevate and Billing Place, they offer less than two per unit, function perfectly fine. What we have here is a mix of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom, so some other communities in the area might factor those differently, and we're kind of in that same realm that maybe Claussen, Berkeley, Troy, Burndale might allow, just based on the mix of units. So that's, you know, the basis of our determining that the parking provided is adequate to serve the apartment buildings. And then just to touch on site lighting, you know, it'll comply with the ordinance, under the field canopy, you know, less than 10, which is noticeable compared to what you might get in some other communities, or especially older stations, that tend to, compared to 20 or plus, is noticeable, and then otherwise, you know, controlling any spillage outside of the property to comply with the ordinance. Then I'll let Tammy with Moody Nolan touch on, you know, the building changes that were made to address the original comments.
So just to highlight a few of the changes...
Name for the record, please.
Sorry, Tammy George with Moody Nolan, we're the architect, the architect for Kroger. So in this first slide, we are just highlighting that the massing comments from the staff review, basically, we were trying to comply with the large-scale retail facilities, limiting the length of uninterrupted passages to 100 horizontal feet or less. I realize that's not the one-to-three ratio that you guys are looking for, but we are trying our best to break up the facades of the building, especially these street-facing facades. As you can see, we've offset some of the features of the building. We're also reusing the existing louvers from the existing building as an architectural feature to add some interest to the building. The next slide. Also, there were some comments about our roof. Sorry, first one is the windowless wall. We did add some windows between the pharmacy and pickup area to meet that requirement. Now, it's shown in elevation four there. And then the coping, or the cornice around the building, we, we've extended that around the perimeter of the building to comply with the cornice requirement as well. Next slide. The second roof design option is required. We did add some sloped roofs to the canopies. I know that it's not as prominent as you might like with the large-scale building, and it's a little bit harder to achieve the multiple roof designs without going to the older gable style roof that Kroger is trying to get away from, just to rebrand themselves. And also, with the different facade offsets, we think that this probably works best to meet that requirement, and it'll meet the slope requirements of the one-to-three slope as well there in the canopies. And finally, I know that you guys are looking for a split-face CMU instead of a smooth-face CMU. We would like for you to consider the materials as presented in the design package. The goal here is for it to be a four-inch-tall CMU, which is more of a brick-like, brick look, appearance. So if we go to a split-face unit, it will not look like the brick design that Kroger would be after. I've included a couple photos of built stores using a four-inch-tall CMU here in the same color palette, so you can see that that reads more like brick than it does CMU. It's a very high-quality, etched, colored CMU, so it is not just plain gray CMU that you might be used to in like a dumpster enclosure or plain industrial building. And I believe that's the end of the building design, but the, Kroger did ask me to touch on some of our energy efficiency pieces of the puzzle. Kroger is one of the industry leaders in terms of energy efficiency. They use all LED lighting. They use energy management systems in their stores, which utilizes occupancy sensors and timers to shut down different departments when needed, so that nobody leaves on lights or video monitors, things like that, when the store should be closed. Also, their refrigeration is state-of-the-art. They have switched to a CO2, which is considered the sustainable option for refrigeration. It is non-flammable, non-toxic, and it allows them to use heat reclaim, to use the water from the refrigeration systems for cleaning and other things to help the environment as well. And also, they're, they use occupancy sensors in their refrigerated cases, so the lights in the cases only come on if there's actually someone there looking at the items in the cases, which is considerable savings. And that is all for the building design portion, and I will turn it over to Cam with Kroger to discuss.
This is where the purpose goes.
Good evening. I'm Cam Barrett. I am the head of Public Affairs for the Kroger Company of Michigan, and I have the privilege of every day of giving back to the communities we live and serve, bringing Kroger's mission to life to feed the human spirit. So how do we do that? 2017, we launched our Zero Hunger, Zero Waste program, which sounds exactly how it does in the name. How do we help reduce hunger in the communities we live and serve, but also how are we a good partner to the earth as well? So the great part about that foundation is since 2017 nationwide, we've done 3.7 billion meals donated back to local communities. Here in Michigan alone, we've done 18.2 million meals just last year. I think the unique part about that is anything that can't be sold in our store but still has the potential and has a shelf life left, we work with food bank partners across the state, just like we do here in Royal Oak. They will come visit our store over there on 12 Mile, they'll pick that food up, and they'll take it back to the closest food pantry that is in need of that. The great part about that is since 2020, over 250,000 pounds of food have gone back to those food banks. I think one of the most unique parts about Royal Oak, though, is that store over there on 12 Mile. So I've had the opportunity to do a multitude of different community events at that one. One of my favorite ones that we do every year is we partner with the Children's Hospital, J. Towers, and Fox Two Detroit to do a cereal drive. On average, this cereal drive will bring in around 700,000 servings of cereal that we donate back to children during the summer who are in need of something to fill their bellies. That's lots of bowls of cereal, 700,000 bowls of cereal. And I think the greatest part about that is on that day, the thing that I love about Royal Oak is it shows up in force. We have elementary schools, we have grandmas, grandpas, moms, dads, all coming together at that store, bringing boxes of cereal. There's literally lineup of cars bringing cereal on that day. Not only that, we also did a volunteer event where we had 300 kids' parents from the local community pack 1,000 back-to-school kits for kids getting ready for the start of the school year. Shows up time after time. This community loves to give back, and I think at Kroger, we love partnering with communities that love to do just that, give back, because there's a lot of need out here. So when we come together, that's when we can truly make an impact. Not only that, obviously, we do our part on the Zero Hunger, Zero Waste side, but we've also been proud sponsors of the zoo for their sustainability program. We've been a long-term partner of the Arts Beats and Eats Festival here, big fan of it, since 2019, partner with them in their sustainability program, but we also come up with unique ways of how can we interact with the community. This year, we did a paint-by-numbers mural, literally 50-long, 50-foot-long mural that your community members came out during Arts Beats and Feeds Festival and helped bring to life. So I think for me, being able to interact with residents from this community, being able to see how they show up for good philanthropic causes or good community give-back initiatives, I think that's the exciting part for me, that's the exciting part for our company, is we've already seen the foundation of what we're doing over at the 12 Mile store and how that community shows up, and being able to have another piece right here in Royal Oak, another store where we could do the gist the same at, if not combine what we already do over at the 12 Mile location, I think that's extremely exciting for the company as a whole and also for the city of Royal Oak. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. Ray Phillips, Krieger Clyde Architects, put together a brief presentation to showcase the multifamily building, which is the newest addition to this site. I think touched on the high-level items throughout this presentation, so I'll try and keep this brief. As was mentioned, we have 85 total dwelling units. It's a good mix of ones and studios mostly, with some two-bed units, 129, I believe, dedicated parking spaces for the 1.52 parking ratio, which we think is adequate, given the mix of units that we have here. And one other thing is we do have 3,500-square-foot clubhouse located on the first floor. We'll get to that later, but it is located at the front of the buildings. When you're driving up to the site, that is the first thing that you'll be presented with. And one other thing to point out in this, so this back half of the site is where this apartment building is located, gets very tight with the access easements that are currently here, the 30-foot-wide access easement from 14 Mile Road running up to the site, and another 30-foot access easement running east and west from Coolidge. So it really kind of pinches down what we're allowed, or what we were able to do here as far as building ins and outs and, and then things like that. So, next slide. So we'll get on to the floor plans. On the top is the first, first-floor plan, so on the right-hand side will be south. So as you're driving up, that's where you'll be met with the clubhouse, 3,000, 3,500 square feet, main entrance located on the outside with lots of glass. It's a simple double-loaded corridor, so a main corridor running down the spine of the building, and then units are located on either side. As we move up to levels two, two through four, you'll see the blue units located on the ends, those are the two-bed units, and we do have inset balconies, so private balconies that would be located for those units. We do have two stairs and one elevator, and I think the elevator, along with the first-floor units, kind of touches on the accessibility, allowing people who have accessible needs to utilize those units, but the elevator allows them to be any, any unit within, within the building. Next slide. So for the exterior design of this building, there's a lot of words on, on this particular slide, but the high-level takeaway is this is located in an industrial, surrounded by industrial buildings. Kind of wanted to play off that as far, just to help it blend in to the, to the current surrounding properties. So if we go to the next slide, these are kind of the, the design inspirations, so large glass, metal accents, mostly brick, canopies, so really trying to blend that with residential development into the, the industrial design. And you can see that here, so this is, as you're driving up, this would be what you're presented with, stacked vertical elements, lots of brick, as I mentioned, and lots of glass. These are just a couple of other perspective shots, so you can see just in front of the clubhouse entry, there is an extended front entryway, so that's to help kind of bridge the gap between interior, exterior space, some exterior space for people to, to congregate, congregate out there. And this is just from the other side. This just kind of touches on our building materials. The key here is durable, low-maintenance materials, lots of brick, lots of metal siding with some accents, and our main entrance canopy kind of providing the focal point as you pull up to the development. And this is one of the, one of the last renderings that we, that we finished, so we still have a little bit of work to do, but this is the detention pond that's just east of the apartment building. So we're looking at the apartment building over the detention pond. We want to do some sort of walking... We want to do some sort of walking path around the detention pond, uh, do some sort of water feature in the detention pond, uh, to make that attractive, and then just north of that on the right side, there's a lot of trees shown there now, but we want to refine that, create it, uh, an outdoor space that can be used, um, by, by the residents. We have two, two quick renderings, so this is, if you're driving on 14 Mile Road and you're looking at, so in the background there, you can see the apartment building, um, doesn't look out of scale, and the Kroger building in front, so this would be kind of what you're presented with as you're driving down 14 Mile Road. And the next one is from Coolidge, as you'd be driving north on Coolidge, so Kroger fuel station and then the Kroger building itself. Uh, one thing that I did want to touch on, uh, is sustainability. So with this project and where it's located, uh, the orientation, we really wanted to focus on high-impact, energy-efficient, uh, measures. Green roof and, uh, solar is, uh, costly, and I don't know how well it would do here. Uh, so we really want to focus on the high-efficiency heat pumps, uh, water heaters, um, Energy Star appliances, LEDs, um, smart controls and occupancy sensors, low-flow plumbing fixtures, and then, uh, the EV charging, uh, on, on site. And this, um, again, I apologize for a lot of words, but, uh, we just wanted to touch on a couple of items that we thought were, um, uh, things that we should discuss here. We are over the allowable height. We're proposing a 46-foot-tall building to the roof line. Um, we're not proposing any sort of exorbitantly tall ceilings. It's kind of the, uh, uh, market, uh, industry standard, around nine feet. Um, while we don't have no, uh, while we don't have street frontage, we do have those access easements that are providing the main vehicle access directly to this apartment building. Um, we are under on the, uh, parking, um, but as I stated, just with the unit mix and what we've, uh, designed to in the past and seen as successful here in Royal Oak, 1.52 we think is adequate. Um, we do have some outdoor spaces, as I mentioned, just in front of the clubhouse, and then, uh, around that detention pond, and I believe it, that's around 16,000 square feet of space, uh, around that detention pond and just, just north of it. Um, and we actually, we did end up adding, adding the foundational landscaping around the building in this, in this latest one. So we're here for any questions, comments? Thank you.
Thanks. We thank you for your patience. We just had the planning commission equivalent of speed dating with, uh, all the different speakers, but each one of them was important. Each one of them covered a really key component or use or, uh, information that we think is important to you in rendering your decision. We believe this project, which values at $50 million, when all is said and done, with the new construction, the parking area, the, uh, stormwater retention, all the landscaping, significant investment in the city of Royal Oak, we believe it will activate the activity center, not only physically with the removal of all this industrial space, but also with what will rise from it. I did want to answer Mr. Murphy's question, which he posed during, uh, uh, his presentation, and that is, yes, this will be, uh, separate property ownership through a site condominium. Uh, there will be cross-easements that are needed for access and things of that nature, but, uh, Mr. Jarboe wants me to assure everyone that with symmetry management, he is the developer, uh, who will have operational control of all the construction, so there will be a unity of control as required by the ordinance, but it will have, uh, two separate ownership pieces through a site condominium. Okay? All right. Uh, thank you very much. We look forward to questions now, or I know you want to have probably the public hearing and then questions later, but however, whatever order you choose.
Uh, if there are questions for the petitioner, I think, uh, we could ask questions now or after public hearing? Okay, if you have a seat, we'll call for the public hearing. Okay. All right, we'll now open the public hearing, uh, part of this, uh, meeting on this plan, on this PUD application. Do we have anybody in the public who would like to come up and speak on the issue? Come on up. Please introduce yourself for the record and give us a three-minute presentation.
I'll note before the public comment starts, we did receive a public comment via email, and that's uploaded to the city's website. I'll hover over it so you can find it when you click on the link. So anyone that wants to view that, but.
Oh, okay.
You're on.
Please proceed.
Yeah, I'm John Bergman. Uh, I'm co-owner of the H.J. Olden Camp Company, and my other co-owner was the one who wrote the email, so you'll kind of hear the same story. Uh, we are the owners of the building that are north of the proposed Krogers and west of the proposed multifamily dwelling. Uh, we've been in that building for 12 years. We've been in business for about 75. We are a distributor of building materials with a retail showroom in that location. Uh, we really don't have any concerns about the Kroger portion of the, of the project. In the spirit of being a good neighbor and good neighbors across the way, we do have some concerns with the residential dwelling that's going to be in the back corner, whether it's our semi-trucks or Kroger semi-trucks from a safety standpoint. Uh, we also have a little bit of concern with our business hours that are start at six and go till six, uh, maybe disturbing some of the, some of the homeowners. So those are just some points that we wanted to kind of get on the record of, you know, some types of concerns.
All right. Thank you.
If anybody's got any questions, let us know.
Whoever you've got, that you're the Steve Bergman that wrote us the letter, correct?
Uh, it's my brother. He's my partner.
So, like, it's from Olden Camp, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's, that's the letter that we've got posted over.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Anybody else from the public like to come up and speak? Come on up.
Hello, Greg Birdtow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, community members. If you can blow there, yeah, go back, there you go. Um, my, my wife and I own the building that is to the east of the property. It's a long, thin building, um, that runs north to east. We purchased that building in 1998, and at that time, when we purchased it, um, I believe, I believe DeVeau was operating the property, and it was a fully functioning industrial complex, um, multiple shifts and so on. Over the years, they moved out, and then Kamal moved in, the, the building has been used for a variety of different industrial purposes over the years. Unfortunately, there hasn't been much of an investment in the building at all. If you're familiar with that property or if you've toured that building, it's an old antiquated building. The sewer system for the property, the drainage is probably from the 60s, 50, 60, 70s. Um, we've hit bad, our building has slotted a number of times over the years because of the, uh, lack of good drainage there. When we originally purchased the building, we assumed that that property would eventually be developed in, into retail. When we purchased it, they had not developed the corner 14 Mile or 15 Mile in Coolidge yet, so that was just an, I think, an old Ford, Ford property. They did a wonderful job with multifamily housing and, uh, retail and restaurants and so on. We kind of assumed that would happen, but it's been 26 years that we've been next to that property, and I don't know if you're familiar with that, our property, but we've invested a lot in the landscaping. We've repaved all of this ourselves over the years. We repaved the interest in, in concrete. We've repaved the side of the building in concrete. Um, we really take great pride in our property. Um, when Frank first, uh, approached me about this idea, I was unable to make that first meeting. However, he met with me personally, we walked through it. I was very excited about it. I think it's a beautiful building. I think it would make a tremendous difference to the property there. Um, and then the second meeting, um, we found out about the apartment building, and I fully support that as well. If you look at that property currently, it's just a, uh, kind of a wasteland back there. To have a water feature, to have it being used, and to have people enjoying it, it, um, would make a big, uh, I think, a big difference for Royal Oak and, and that, that corner. So again, fully supportive of this project. I think the, uh, plans are, are beautiful, and I know we're going to have traffic issues. I mean, we're going to be adding a lot more traffic in that corner, but honestly, I think that, that, that we will be able to work well with that. And, um, we've got adequate parking, uh, for our building, and I think that we can make that, that we can overcome that issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak on this, uh, on this application? Come on up. Uh-oh, you're being beeped before you even start.
Now, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Clyde Desby, it's good to see all of you on, uh, this side of the dais, sort of an unusual feeling, and, uh, unfortunately, I do not share the same sentiments as the speaker prior to me, and it's kind of hard to speak up against the plan when I've got about $3,000 an hour worth of consultants sitting behind me, but unfortunately, in my mind, and with discussion that I've had with many of you when I was on that side of the dais is, you know, what kind of marquee projects do we deserve at our marquee intersections? One day, you folks are going to have to face, you know, what do we put at the corner of Catalpe and Main Street? And what kind of gateway or my, marquee project do we deserve? And here we are at another marquee intersection at 14 and Coolidge, and unfortunately, the building is not situated in such a way that it features the architectural features that it's, that are, that are being presented. Instead, we're going to have a sea of asphalt, some arbivites, and filling stations. The building itself, had it been situated at the corner of the intersection where it was architecturally pleasing and perhaps that they cut, you know, cut a corner of the building out or, or, or had a round architectural feature with a big statue or something to, to really draw attention to how beautiful 14 and Coolidge could be, this project unfortunately does not even come close to that, because again, parking and gas stations are not exactly the most attractive things that you could be looking at, what, at an intersection. Secondarily, while I was serving with you folks, obviously, we heard from the master plan consultants on numerous bases, on numerous occasions, that PUDs have been far too relied upon in the city of Royal Oak. We just adopted a new master plan, and now we have a huge project coming in front of us, and we revert, we revert right back to a PUD. I do feel that this plan could be presented in such a way that it meets our zoning ordinances or comes close to it and could just be a simple rezoning instead of a, a full-fledged PUD. And thirdly, the thing that really sort of caught my eye when I was looking at the write-up from staff is that, had this been a standard presentation using a standard zoning process, it looks like there are 17 deviations that are being applied to the Kroger envelope itself in terms of the building height, the amount of glass, the amount of parking, and there are also eight deviations associated with the sign package. It seems to me that with 25 potential deviations that would be avoided going through the PUD process, that our ordinances, just quite frankly, are not being respected to the extent that they should be. And, uh, for those various reasons, I think that Kroger could give us a better package that more represents what Royal Oak deserves, and I hope you folks will send them back to the drawing board. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to come up and speak on this project, on this PUD application? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to bring it back to the side of the table. I'm going to call on Mr. Ellison.
I've got more of a, uh, well, it's, it's a question, but it's more of an observation. Where we've got the, Tim, could you bring the?
Site plan?
Yeah, just bring the site plan, and I want to see the, um, residences, apartments.
You want to see an elevation?
The site, yeah, I'm looking for a site. If you can go, if you can go back to the, uh, to the, um, Google Earth picture, we can get it on there, too. You just go up to, okay. Yeah, that's where I'm looking for, okay. So that, that site right there is where we're going to put the, the apartments, correct? Now, I'm also knowing that area, if you look up there to the, to the, um, what we'll call it, the northeast portion of this, you've got Parmenter Avenue coming into the side of that property. Now, Parmenter is, is a street that is back in there, goes all the way back over to Crooks Road, and right now, it butts up against the property that we're talking about. Has there been any consideration or thought about opening that end of Parmenter, which would give you a secondary, a secondary entrance to that, and would help decrease the traffic flow at the 14 and Coolidge intersection? Just a question.
Yes. However, there's a challenge there that we'd have to work through. That portion of Parmenter, uh, I think to, um, Delamere has been vacated. That property is no longer owned by the city. It's been vacated, so the property owners, even though the street's still there.
Yeah.
The property owners, I believe, on either side, under a vacation, it's 50/50. So we would have to work with them in some way, shape, or form.
Okay, well, that answers my question.
But that would be, that would be something we can look at.
It could be done, but then there's advantages to do it, but is the value there?
Yeah. Yeah. In fact, one of the things we talked about when we met, this is months ago, with, uh, some, uh, staff, was possibly some, that we would be willing to have a, just want to call it a floating easement, if some property was ever requi, acquired along that east side, that we'd be willing to have an easement into the project. But you're right, Parmenter makes the most sense, but that's something we'd have to work through.
Yeah.
Yeah, and no guarantee, you know, that the two property owners would, would work with us, but it certainly makes sense.
It's an option, it's there, and if you don't ask the question, you don't get the answer. I think, again, opening that up gives you a secondary access to your purpose, and it also decreases some of the traffic flow. We have to go all the way down 14 Mile, we get out of that complex.
Right. Okay. All right. Are there other, Mr. Grantino, Commissioner Grantino?
Um, so a quick question on the, um, statement around, uh, Kroger's, um, standard to recycle 90% of the, the demoed building. How is that, um, how do you validate that standard, or what, what's, uh, standard do you use, um, to show compliance to that standard that Kroger's implementing on the demolition of that building is one question. And as a corollary to that, I think there was mention of some of the elements of the existing building that are coming down are being reused in the new building. What were those again? I think you maybe touched on it, but I missed it. So two questions, different questions.
So I can answer the demo question, I can answer the architectural question. The demo question would be, um, with our demo contractor, we would quantify them to recycle 90% of what's there. And normally, um, on a, on a demo site, we can get up to maybe 50 or 60, but with this having the, uh, the amount of steel that it does have and the concrete that it does have, uh, we, we definitely can get to that 90%. So we would quantify our demo contractor to do that.
Can you just describe how they actually, how they actually do that, how they validate that they're in fact recycling those?
Yeah, if you ever see it, so we're doing, we're actually, uh, under construction currently, under a large site right now, 14 and Orchard Lake in the city of Farmington Hills, and we demoed a portion of probably 200,000 square feet. And what we did there, there was a, a mix of buildings. There was a, a wood structure, there was a steel structure, and what, you'll see it all separated on-site, and, and then that goes to a certain, a certain area where it can be recycled. The steel goes to a steel site, obviously, the concrete goes to a recycling where they can, what we probably, plus normally do is, on a site, we can actually grind up the asphalt, grind up the concrete, and use it as base for our next development. The architectural question, I think.
Can you repeat the architectural question?
Yeah, uh, I believe in one of the narratives, there was, um, a statement referring to some of the existing building being salvaged and reused in the new building, uh, but I didn't quite catch what that was. So if you could touch on that or clarify.
Absolutely. So, Tammy George from Moody Nolan, we would be salvaging the existing louvers off of the existing building, they're aluminum, um, fins, uh, that are currently on the facade of the building. We would be removing those and reusing those on the face of the new Kroger store as a decorative
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you mentioned, um, a lot about the environmental sustainability of the, the building and using the state-of-the-art, um, technology with sensors and lighting and whatnot. Uh, that certainly would be an improvement over probably an old industrial building. But part of that conversation, you had mentioned about contributing to, you know, a potential, um, fund of sorts, where, uh, maybe, you said kilowatt, so let's say like solar power or whatever, where you would contribute to, I don't know, the Civic Foundation, put an earmark on it that says it has to be used for solar panels in the community, where maybe, I imagine this is your thought process, that actually that, those panels could be used, um, or that money could be used in terms of grants or something like that to other properties or people in need in the community to drive higher CO2 reductions, more sustainable features where, um, you know, they're more easily transmittable in the community abroad. Did I understand that? Did I understand that correctly or am I assuming too much?
No, you're spot on. So what we would do is contribute to a fund that at the discretion of the city, you guys could use that as a grant. So, you know, obviously, we're going to be demoing here and everything, everything's going to be brand-new, new power, switchgear and sorts, but there is certain, you know, maybe houses or even other commercial businesses that need an upgrade of some sort and maybe can't afford it. So, we would want to start that fund up with that 25,000 and then you could use those funds as you go through whatever be a household or a co-op business.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Oh, and since I got you up here, I had a question. You said you're looking at workforce housing and potentially affordable housing. I imagine at some point when you do the environmentals on or whatever, leveraging maybe a brownfield that we've seen before or simply finding a program with the federal government to support the city's initiatives with affordable housing?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Commissioner Grantino.
With respect to the multifamily building, is there any separation from the the Olden Camp site, from the residential parking that's on that west side? And then as an additional question to that, to the north of that Olden Camp site, it seems like it's maybe a storage yard or something like that, which I'm a little bit concerned it seems like a bit of an incompatible use between what visually you can see on the overhead versus a, you know, four-story residential building. Is there any sort of physical separation between those two areas?
So, there is a green space for one and there will be plantings on that green space, but there's also the possibility and if if it benefits the development, we're happy to put up maybe a fence of some sort, a decorative fence, not a wall, but a decorative fence to make that separation.
I just wanted to add one thing. If we're all familiar with the southern part of town, which was heavily industrial at one point and that has transitioned, we kind of see the same thing here. So although today we'll have an industrial use next to an apartment, we've already seen that in the southern part of town where there was a transition from industrial buildings to multifamily and also new housing. So I think, you know, we've seen that work. So, yes, this is introduction of a new concept with living in that in that specific general industrial area, but it's something that we've already experienced and seen and it's worked.
My concern isn't so much the industrial building adjacent, it's the storage yard to the north of the industrial building. That that's, if you zoom in on that, that overhead image, you know, understanding it may look slightly different today.
Right.
That's not, that's a very different type of industrial use versus just a building. That's a storage yard that is, again, if you could imagine living right next to that, it's a very different experience than living right next to a building. So that's my my concern is because the the building and the parking that you're proposing, short of a decorative fence that was just mentioned, has no separation from that storage area that's there and that seems like a very incompatible use, at least in that specific section. The building, I don't necessarily have an issue with, it's that northern section of the storage, it just does not seem compatible with residential.
Yeah, well, this is what happens in a transition phase. You're going to have some things that appear at the time very different. We think over time the entire area is going to change. That's what you've got to plan for. Somebody has to be first, we're first. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Maybe a question on that and, you know, there was a, and I think it's a fair question, but I would also imagine, you know, for your potential tenants living in the residential building, that that would be something that they would be open and obvious that they would see when they're seeing a unit. I can't remember the drawings, like if they looked out the window, they would see that use there before they would rent the building and that would be addressed in the price of the building or the price of the apartment.
Yeah, there's no hiding that. There's no hiding that yard that's there. I can tell you too, you know, from our offices on Delamere Court, we do a walkathon twice a year and we do the Normandy Walk around the park. There is residential around there, there is a dog daycare that's directly across the street from residential. I know that maybe dog daycare is better than having this across, but again, we're the first ones in. So hopefully, what we do here today will help somebody drive to maybe make that property better. Maybe it's the property owner.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ellison.
Let me just add a comment. Pat, if you go up on Harrison at the railroad tracks, there's two fairly new, there's apartment conflict being built right now, it's brand-new, and there's one that's been there for a few years. And they go up two or three, four stories, I don't know, but they look into the tow yard, the city pound yard.
That's true.
And that's not a pretty sight, but we haven't heard any complaints, we haven't heard anything, I mean, they they bought the properties knowing that was there. So I think, you know, it could, you know, depends on your tolerance.
All right, I have a question for Mr. Murphy and a little confused because your rundown of deviations includes that the landscaping at the foundation, I guess on either building is not met. And I think we just heard the petitioner say, oh, well, we changed that. Are we looking at the latest drawings or are there drawings and design that we have not yet seen?
No, the drawings in the packet are what you're considering tonight. Perhaps the petitioner can indicate more clearly to you whether the presentation that was provided addresses that deviation versus the drawings that are you're reviewing today.
Okay, that is what I'm wondering, because you said, your your report says the foundation landscaping not met.
Those are the correct numbers.
Okay, pull the petitioner back up, can you answer that? Has there been a change since this has been, this application was received in the foundation landscaping?
So, my understanding is, that's the initial review letter. I don't know if there's been an update because we did revised plans within a week for this meeting. So those plans in this presentation match one another to respond to the initial review letter. So the view letter raised concerns about foundation plantings, we added the foundation plantings.
In the drawings?
Correct.
Okay. Comment? All right. All right, thanks. And and is it correct that they have 20% green space?
Look at the numbers. Let's look at the numbers in the report.
It's not something that was in the staff report and we heard it in the presentation and I wondered.
And I can't recall if it's addressed in the staff report and I'd have to scour for that percentage. I apologize, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, while you're looking for that, I'm going to make a couple comments here. Let me get to my page here. So, this is sort of the legal part of it here. There are two sets of criteria that we're looking at. We're looking at the PUD that we could approve based on a design concept, correct? That's under 770-98C and there's, there's six criteria. And then those are mandatory. They have to demonstrate that or they can't, we're supposed to say no. Then there's a number from 770-129 for a zoning ordinance change or zoning change that are not mandatory, but we are required to review them. And that's A through, A through I. So really, for me, it seems we have to start with 770-98C and I just want to say, when I look at these criteria, I know that there's some people, more than a few people who probably say, geez, that's a gateway, do we really want to put a Kroger there? Nothing against Kroger, but is that what we really want there? But I'm looking at the criteria and I think that criteria two through five, I think they've demonstrated. Criteria six, the master plan, I got to tell you this, Mr. Murphy read what an activity center is supposed to be and it's supposed to activate, but right now, that is a non-public piece of property. People can't just go on there, they're trespassing. Now, if if this project goes forward, it will have a significant commercial space, it'll be a large special purpose building, it will have retail, it will have a Starbucks, so food and beverage, and it will invite the public. So instead of a non-public space sitting there, there are going to be public activity on this property, quite a bit of public activity. So, I have to say, like it or not, this project meets the aspirations of our master plan, at least the way we wrote it, even if it's not maybe what we had in mind, maybe we had in mind some other mixed use. By the way, this isn't really mixed use. The petitioner added residential, but they're not really mixed, they don't interface, so it's sort of like one's over here, one's over there. It's not really mixed use. But my point is that this, this does fit the master plan criteria of the activity center. So that leaves only the community benefits left to analyze from my point of view and quite frankly, I think they've they've met it because I understand the argument, we've heard, all you're doing is complying with the zoning ordinance, but if, you know, when it comes to the water management, but if another robot company comes in there and takes over, that water management isn't going to change. And then you have, I think, I appreciate the charitable donation activities, EV parking, there are some community benefits here. So my point would be, when I'm looking at this, I think they meet all the criteria that are mandatory. Now, did they meet all the criteria elsewhere and is this plan something that we like enough to approve? Those are different questions. My point is, I think they meet the six criteria.
So, questions about the point you brought up earlier in the sense that the the staff report that we have and the staff and the the design that that staff report is based on, while I appreciate the the applicant sort of pointing out the revisions that have been made, it does seem like they they've attempted to address many of the concerns. I think it's it's sort of putting us and staff in a little bit of an unfair position in the sense that just if you, as to your knowledge, the revisions that were presented, not the plans that are a part of our packet, when were those, I guess, given to staff such that they became a part of our packet from a presentation perspective, not the actual site plan documents? My point being, it seems like they made some positive changes to the drawings, but that's not what staff had an opportunity to review and quite frankly, that's not what's in front of us to review. And so it puts us in, puts me in a little bit of a conundrum in the sense of what do we actually weigh as what's in front of us to gauge the value of?
The only thing that you're weighing are the drawings that were associated, the original drawings associated with the packet, the the agenda item and that the staff report is based upon. They provided some presentation materials and as you hover over them, you can clearly see that they're referenced as presentation, they're kind of the last remaining items. The presentations were given to us late this afternoon, maybe four o'clock in the afternoon.
So, if I could just pop back in, this is a two-step process, it's actually a three-step process because there's also the traffic study that needs a peer review. So I think question number one is, is this petitioner entitled to approval based on these drawings, based on the design concept of a PUD? They certainly, I think we certainly cannot accept the site plan at this point because we haven't got the traffic study peer reviewed. So we would have to have them come back in, you know, within six months regardless. So I just point that out, but I do think, I'd like to keep in mind that it is a multi-step process.
I will disagree with our esteemed chair on the the meaning of the word "all." That is, there are, as we've established, six requirements and it says, "The applicant for a PUD must demonstrate all of the following." And and I feel you have perhaps too cavalierly dismissed point six. "The proposed development shall be consistent with the goals and policies of the city of Royal Oak master plan." Now, the master plan is a new document and in fact, earlier tonight, we heard from consultants who proposed to help us develop the zoning that will be tied to that master plan or respond to that master plan. And in fact, one of their proposals specifically calls for a deep study into the redevelopment of the Delamere area. As we see this area pivoting from industrial to other uses, I, and the master plan says this area consists of medium-scale, multi-story attached buildings and surface parking lots behind the buildings. Now, it does allow for occasional large special purpose buildings, but I'm disinclined to offer, to permit a, an occasional use at this location with a sea of parking on a pivotal corner in our city at this point. I mean, once this is built, it's built, the, it's done, the Kroger will be there forever and and will affect what happens in this area. I, I'm happy they're willing to put housing in and I, I guess it's, it's, you know, they're willing to do that. The this project must be so lucrative to them that they're willing to put an apartment building in a really unlikely location. I do think this area will be developed to the points that have been made here earlier about other parts of the city where we've seen residential come into industrial areas, but I think that's kind of a stretch. And I'm just, we put, how many years into the master plan? Three, four years into the master plan after waiting 20 years to do that process? And I'm not willing to forego the opportunity to do something pivotal on this corner.
Mr. Mayor.
I hear both of those arguments and I tend to agree with the chairman and I'll just point out one thing. Well, this is part of the Delamere area. If you look to the south of 14 mile, you have a very large American axle manufacturing facility that I can almost promise you is never going to go away anytime soon. If you look to the west, you have a large building development next to English Gardens, a retailer and next to the railroad tracks. If you look to the north, you have some self-storage and you have, like we heard tonight from H.J. Oldencamp, you know, some activities there that are still relatively, I'll say, a little bit bigger footprint, definitely not small. And so I think while we talk about Delamere overall, I think the vision, at least when I had of Delamere, are not necessarily, let's say, this larger scale area corner. It's more in the, as you move to the east, when you start looking at actually Delamere and all the individual smaller buildings that already have the characteristics of having smaller types, I mean, those could be converted into different types of businesses and residences. Coming over here and looking at uses, especially with the large manufacturing scale that's across the street and even as you go down Coolidge a little bit, I just think that that corner isn't, you know, you're not going to get, you know, a completely redeveloped neighborhood built there. That is going to be something of a large occasional, you know, or an occasionally large use. I do think when we start talking about what happens in the east, having the anchor of a grocery store, having activity, activation, landscaping, people, all of that, I think will motivate, signal and drive the type of development that we're looking more, I think what, at least I had and I think most people when they think of Delamere, they, in fact, you brought it up, I'm like, yeah, I guess it is, but I think the east side of this project is more what we think about Delamere. So I do think it meets the definition. I do think it can be a catalyst for what we're looking for. I think that certainly these, you know, it's been undeveloped for 26 years. I think we had somebody that's owned a building next door for 26 years and I worry if you wait for the absolute beautiful thing we want, you know, in our minds, it may be vision, you know, may not ever come and you might actually just flip it over to another industrial use. So I think that, I hear both arguments, but if you have to play the odds and play the bets on what would happen to this property if the, you know, it was continued to stay on the market, I don't know that it would be favorable and I think that for me, the definition of, in our master plan, master use plan, we talk about an active area, I do believe it meets it for those reasons.
Mr. Ellison.
I, I agree with the chairman on his findings, that this project does meet our goals, but I'm not going to dwell on that. I want to talk about the whole PUD process. There have been, the state gave us this whole PUD process 20, 30 years ago, Joe, been around for a while, you know, longer than that. And the city of Royal Oak has taken advantage of the PUD process to our advantage. We have had many projects in this city that we have approved under the PUD. Personally, I hold my support of a PUD for something that is a unique. Personally, I hold my support of a PUD for something that is a unique project, something that has some challenges that during, through standard operating procedures, we may not be able to accomplish. So I kind of look at the project, and I look at this project on this corner. Is it perfect? No. Does it kind of solve what we've got in my mind? Yes, I think it's an advantage. And I think we ought to support going through the PUD process so that we can get some of these extra things that we probably couldn't get. Because I don't think they're adding anything that's detrimental to the project. I think they're adding everything good. And the use of the PUD gives us the opportunity to work with those.
All right, Mr. Commissioner Gantina.
I'm going to respectfully disagree with Mr. Ellison on the use of the PUD process. I'm always very sensitive to the use of the PUD process. And I agree that it should be for unique site constraints and unique projects that don't squarely fit into other zoning designations that we currently have. When this project originally came to us, it did not include the residential component. It was, the request was for a conditional rezoning. I think we all agree it was woefully deficient. The applicant heard us, made some changes, and then made the choice to add that second component of the residential, which sort of forced them into the PUD realm. That was a choice that the applicant made. They absolutely could have gone down the conditional rezoning route. Now, I don't know, you know, how effective that would have been based on the deficiencies of that original proposal. But I think this is another case where a PUD is simply being used to get what the applicant wants at the end of the day and not to present a project that is, or a site that is so uniquely constrained or a project that's so unique that it doesn't squarely fit within our current zoning designations. The other concern that I have is, so the PUD is what is in front of us, and lynchpin is typically a community benefit. And there's been many things discussed tonight for us to be considered, for us to consider as community benefit, that aren't really part of the package or part of what we're supposed to be considering. It was stated here tonight about making a donation to be able to fund certain other things. That's not what was presented to staff. That's not what was in the staff report. It was stated here tonight that they're going to be looking into affordable housing for this residential component. But that's not what was presented to staff. That's not what's in the staff report. And I get very concerned about utilizing the PUD process as sort of this negotiating sort of form or tool. But that's, what's presented to us is not developed enough to where, again, puts staff and us in a very difficult position where that's not what we're looking at. Things were stated here tonight and presented here tonight that certainly looked much better than what was originally presented and what's in the report. But I get troubled by the fact that if this project does move forward in some way, shape, or form, it's going to move forward ostensibly on the basis of certain community benefits that were stated but aren't actually documented or memorialized in the information that is, what is being presented to us. Certainly, it could, you know, try to lock it in at a later date in the process. But that's the trouble that I have is this PUD process, the way it's being used. What we're being presented with, to me, doesn't necessarily meet the criteria to utilize the PUD process properly.
Okay, I'm going to call the mayor in just a second. But I do believe the attorney here will correct me. But I believe the operation is part of the site plan review.
Say that again.
I believe part of the site plan review is the operation of the site. In other words, that operation is under the site plan. So that's really not part of this criteria.
Yeah, and I think too, and I think Commissioner Gantina brings up some good points. I'd also, I've been through a lot of PUDs as well, so I have biased experience. It does, in some cases like this, help the city negotiate versus just the willingness of the applicant to do things. But I would say that we're offering a recommendation to the city commission. So we're not doing a site plan, or I'm sorry, we're not doing a pure traffic study, like demanding it right now. But what we would do is we'd make a recommendation that, okay, we recommend this if, a pure traffic study is done if, you know, there's a contribution to some sort of fund. If, you know, there is a solid plan that talks about, you know, putting affordable housing there, you know, that has more detail. So I think that those are all things that we can put in the recommendation if they're unclear in the presentation. Am I correct, Mr. Markham?
That is correct, but there's also legal vulnerabilities to moving forward without items that are not represented in the staff report in the site plan itself.
Okay. But we're not going to, just to pipe up here, we don't, personally, I'm not going to support approving the site plan tonight myself. I can tell you, my vote would be no because of things like you're just talking about. Operations, affordability, other, and to get the latest plans, make sure we have the latest, you know, the presentation materials incorporated. I'm not, I'm not going to vote, I'm not going to support the site plan approval tonight. All those things belong in the site plan review, I think.
Well, I have a question. Honestly, I find this apartment building to be unlikely. It's an awkward location. I don't know that I would want to be living next to the back of a factory or overlooking an outdoor storage yard. Is there a, how do we avoid the risk that they build a grocery store and never build the apartment building?
That's for you.
For you. I think that's more of a planning question.
Historically, this case, the city commission would have a contingency. That's part of their conditional rezoning agreement, a term that indicates they have to pull building permits simultaneously. So all site improvements would need to be obtained at one time. That's been discussed with the petitioner.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner.
On that point, though, the way you just stated it, just to be clear, the city commission could create a contingency that building permits need to be pulled simultaneously. However, building permits get pulled all the time, and buildings are not built. The cost of a building permit is significantly less than the cost of building a building. And I understand that there could be the contingency that both buildings are constructed at the same time. To Commissioner, or to Charlotte Douglas's point.
That's something that I would be remiss to answer right now. I would need to look more deeply into that. It's not a question that comes up all the time, which is why we're all fighting with it right now.
I tend to agree with Woody on this. But I think there's just a lot of unknowns that we don't have. And granted, you can leave it vague, but I think you want to quantify. We're essentially creating a draft of a contract with the city for a development. And there's a lot of contract elements that are not there or very vague. I think we need to revisit with a full understanding of what that is. And we can agree or disagree or negotiate from there. I think there's a lot of things that are said, but until they're memorialized on paper and we see across the board, I'd be more inclined to speaker vote on that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Somebody thinks of it. I do agree with the mayor in the sense that at this body, we are just forwarding a recommendation, right? I think there's a lot of conversation that's been had tonight that the city commission will have the benefit of, the applicant has the benefit of. You know, when it moves forward from this body, if the recommendation is for approval or denial, it's still just a recommendation. The next step in the process, when it gets to the city commission, again, perhaps there's different information that's available to that body, and perhaps a different information, and different decision is made. But that, I guess, is one thing I needed to remind myself of is that we're just talking about a recommendation for approval or not here. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, and just to, again, be clear here, we, if we were to have a vote on the PUD under the design concept we have in front of us, we could, say, within six months, come back with a full set of, you know, information for us. And here's my question. Let's say six months from now, or four months from now, petitioner comes back with a site plan for us to re-review, and we don't like it. Can we reject it?
Yes, you could, you could make a recommendation to the city commission to not
To not accept it.
To not provide final PUD approval. But you could recommend against the final PUD approval at the city commission level. You can also move it forward today as presented and as reported by staff. And the city commission can discuss with the petitioner. The petitioner can present something based on your conversation and the various remarks that they've made about providing this and that and the other, again, without any prior notice. They can clarify all that, put that together, and submit that as part of what the city commission. City commission may send them in an entirely different direction, agree with them. Could all change.
I think the city commission relies on the expertise of this body to make a solid recommendation and cover all of the bases and not kick the can down the road to the city commission. So I'm inclined to agree with, to here, that any progress forward here is going to have to come back to us with all of the specifics and all of the promises met on paper before we can make a recommendation to the city commission.
You had referenced the topic of preliminary PUD, making a recommendation for approval or denial, of a preliminary PUD as well as final PUD. You, the preliminary PUD is really intended to, as noted at the beginning, to identify your approval of their use or uses and the design concept. They've obviously provided you with far more than a design concept. So I think you're really beyond that preliminary stage.
Yeah.
I don't think you're at a, granting them preliminary approval tonight. It doesn't really meet the intent of what a preliminary approval was designed for. You, again, the variety of things, denial, recommend approval. You could also postpone the item. Wide variety of things to consider.
Okay, I'm a little confused by that. I was under the impression that one of our options is to have them come back with another site plan, but you're saying no.
All the things that I'm hearing are
amended site plan.
Yes, and the overwhelming majority of what at least I'm hearing is very little to do with the actual design of the site itself.
Okay, well, I'm going to just give you, for instance, here, okay? One of the things that you've cited as a deviation is there's no public, in this large commercial project, there's no public spaces like a fountain or a clock tower or a seating area. You've listed that. And one of the things that I would want to see is that. But you're saying that that's, we're beyond that now? Because if I'm going to approve this, I would say I would approve it, but I want to see that addressed because you brought it up, and I think it's important.
That was, many of those, all of those things were highlighted in staff's initial comments to the petitioner. So the petitioner had the opportunity to correct those items well in advance of what the final drawings that were included in your packet. They've elected not to do any of that.
Okay, but they talked to you, they didn't talk to us.
Correct. That's why we identify the requirements to them well in advance of tonight's meeting.
Okay, well, if I want to, if I, I can't make a motion, but if I did, I want to, if I wanted to say, I approve this, but this item that Mr. Murphy said needs to be addressed, that's off the table?
No, you could do that, and you could pull that item out of the list, the 25 or whatever items. You could pull that out and make the contingency that that item be corrected, essentially.
So that would have to be part of a motion. Say, we want to approve the PUD, and these contingencies are going to be amended.
Sure, just like you could add affordability element or the recycling component or whatever else has been oddly talked about.
Or a satisfactory peer review of the traffic study.
Correct.
Oh, sorry.
Just to clarify from my own mind, if we approve this with a resolution that says, "As presented with staff recommendations," and that goes forward, they have got to follow those staff recommendations. If you have recommended that we change something.
He didn't recommend to change it. He just said, "If you approve it, this is one of the deviations." And it says, "As on the plans." Well, I don't like it as on the plans myself.
Okay.
We're essentially accepting all those deviations.
But we could, emotionally, we made to amend those. When they say, "Strike that one," we want this fixed.
And I think, and I think that's where my head was going. If there are things we want, I mean, two of us sit on the city commission. So the message isn't going to be lost unless we happen to be both out that day. And then I would hope that they wouldn't vote on it. So we will have a recap of this conversation. But if there are key elements that a motion maker wants that says, hey, I'm good, but these things need to be corrected, fixed, added, and managed. And we do that on a regular basis. We don't say, oh, you, you know what, you're, you know, we leave things to staff. We'll approve this, but, you know, take care of your light situation here or your barrier fence there, whatever it may be, to the satisfaction of staff. And we've, I've been up here, we've sent stuff to the city commission as well to say, like, yeah, it's pretty good, but, you know, they really need to address this issue. This is a little bigger of a project. There's more stuff here, granted. But if there are key elements for a preliminary look, because I do think it's going to be interesting if the city commission actually has a different take. You know, I don't know that this is going to be one of those projects where the city commission's like, oh, this is a small parcel of land for a fast food restaurant on the corner of wherever, you know, this is a very large. I think each one of those commission members are going to have their say. I can almost promise you, there'll be some additional changes and requests from the city commission. I don't know how you deal with that. I'm not promising that from me. I'm just saying, if I was a betting man, you know, there's some folks there that may want to see a few things different or a few clarities as well, so. I don't know what that best process is, back and forth. You know, they could send it back down to planning. I mean, you don't want to take three years, you know, to work on a project. But there might be some additional input too, so just something to consider.
Yes, I would strike recommendation eight if it was me. Recommendation eight. And there could be other things added, like, you know, description of the operation of the affordable housing aspect and the charitable activities aspect, if that's what you want.
Well, I guess that's a question for Josh. And that's, striking things, I understand, but adding things seems like a different action.
Well, I think that's our job.
And ultimately, I think what this panel needs to be cognizant of is evaluating whether these are minor changes that can be dealt with administratively or if they materially change the project, the site plan, the use, things like that. Because if it's something that's minor administrative, we move those things all the time with contingencies with other safeguards moving it forward. If it's something more substantial, that's something that this panel may want to revisit itself before moving it forward.
To that point, I mean, I look at, you know, recommendation number nine, signage should be permitted as depicted on the site plan. We haven't even discussed the signage plan. And it's pretty significant in terms of the amount of signers that they're proposing.
Yes.
I think we need to look at all these recommendations a little more carefully.
So, do, I don't think, Mr. Murphy gave us a separate discussion of the sign proposal. Would you like to do that? I would like.
I don't recall them off the top of my head, so we'll go through them. And I think it'd probably be worthwhile if the petitioner came up as well to talk about that. But you'll see, shown in the table, the sign ordinance provisions in the left column, the particular ordinance provision, what it addresses, and how their proposal fails to meet these particular items. With regard to the facade frontage, excuse me, the front facade elevation, the maximum freestanding sign area, the height of a freestanding sign, the number of signs on the canopy for the filling station, the fuel, the size of the fuel pricing sign on the canopy for the fuel pumps, and as well as the wall sign on the Kroger building itself. All of those things exceed the existing ordinance requirements for that particular location and the sign ordinance requirements specific to that sign area. So, far exceeding them. I know that the petitioner had put together for you tonight a sign package that they are more than welcome to discuss with you. And I can bring that up on the screen.
If there are no objections from anybody, I would call the petitioner back up and ask them to give us that presentation. ask them to give us that presentation. Please come on up and give us the presentation on your signs, if you don't mind.
Garrett Foley, construction manager for Kroger. And we can keep scrolling through, I mean, probably everyone will want to see the actual signage photos. You keep scrolling down. So you got our main elevation there, and then our Kroger sign, I understand what you guys are calling for your ordinance, but kind of our prototypical look there. Some of the signage that we can discuss, I mean typically we like to, you know, if we have a coffee shop in there, we like to show the sub-signage there of Starbucks, but that'd be something that we'd be willing to pull off, it was just more showing for our customers so they know, you know, get a better evaluation of what's in that store. Same thing with wine and spirits, if that's something that's objectionable, we would pull that sign from the building as well. Pickup pharmacy, again, that's kind of a critical one, I mean, it's a key item of our business, we'd like to have that signage on there. Just scroll down. Again, on the side, having a pickup sign on the side of the building to have, so the customers know where to go for pickup, it's kind of a critical item. Pharmacy drive-through on the canopy there, ideally, that'd be another one that's key to show what that canopy is. Push on the shove, I mean, is that, you know, offensive to you guys, we can remove that one as well. So then you kind of go through all the dimensions and everything like that. Again, I mean, with the PUD, I mean, we are open to you guys' suggestions, if there's something that you guys feel is outlandish that we're asking for. So it's kind of all the inner open, I mean, all those kind of, just kind of critical items to have on the canopy to let the customer know where they're going. Again, this is, fuel sign here would be at the corner, again, a key item to show, you know, what our fuel pricing is, so the customer knows what we're advertising there. Again, if the height, if we have to adjust that, I mean, we'd be open to that.
Well, I guess I would ask this question, why didn't you design it to meet the height requirement? You must have some reason where you're asking us for relief.
This is the prototype of what Kroger would, this is ideally what Kroger would like to go for.
This is a one-size-fits-all Kroger sign?
We adjust, we can adjust as you guys see fit, but it's just more when we're going through, kind of showing what we feel is gonna be ideal for our business to thrive here, this is the signage that we'd like to have. If there's something, again, if you guys feel that is, you know, we do not, you do not want it, then we can see what we can do to adjust it to make sure that we meet your guys' need while also properly advertising to our customers.
And this, what, the sign that's on the screen right now, that's a monument sign, where is that located on property?
We have two of those, one of each the Coolidge, the northern Coolidge entrance, and also on the 14 mile at the traffic light there.
Okay, are those oversized? Are they exceeding the...
Were they exceeding?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sorry, I didn't see you.
We've got in our recommendation, I'm gonna read the paragraph that's in there, it says, "The item number six, results of approval, if approved, the preliminary PUD plan would constitute approval..." What's up, sir?
Would constitute approval will use and design concept and confer on the applicant the right to proceed with preparation of a final PUD site plan. Approval of the preliminary PUD plan would give the petitioner six months to prepare and submit a final PUD site plan for review and approval by both the planning commission and the city commission according to the zoning ordinance. Now, in this package we have tonight, they have listed every sign variance that the city has picked out. So they can look at that and they can make those sign changes, or they cannot make their sign changes, and if they come back on their six-month reapplication and they haven't made the sign changes, then it's contingent upon them to explain why. But I think for us, at this juncture right now, when we haven't even approved anything, to be debating signs and the quality of signs, and the same thing goes for all the, the things that the planning has put in there about building spaces, it tells you what's supposed to be in there and what they propose. So, the petitioner, and this resubmital six months from now, is gonna come back with a new set of plans, and they're gonna go through that list of all these deviations, and they're either gonna incorporate them, or they're gonna come back and tell us why they can't, and then we have the final choice at that point to approve the revised site plan or not. But debating signs tonight isn't gonna get us anywhere. I think we either approve the preliminary plan with the items as listed and let them come back in six months to defend why they did or did not put these things in there.
So I think Mr. Murphy made the point earlier that we've sort of gone past the point of conceptual, and what I mean, where I'm going with that is, all of these deviations were presented to the applicant already. They already had the option to make adjustments to the plan to eliminate some of these deviations or comply with our ordinance. They made the choice not to, and this is what's left. I understand what you're saying, but, and I sort of, I guess, I bristle a little bit with the applicant's statement of, "Oh, we can adjust." They had an opportunity to adjust. They were given this list of deviations on what they submitted and chose to not address any of them, and that's why they still exist in what information that's been presented to us right now. So I agree with you in that part of the process allows them to make some changes, however, we've already been one step into that process, and they've clearly not demonstrated the desire to make any of the changes yet.
The process of the PUD allows them to do that, it gives us latitude, from the government's standpoint, we've got latitude from both the planning commission and the city commission to adjust things based on the PUD process. And so they can look at that and say, "Okay, that's easy enough, we can do this, we can fix this", and come back as part of the PUD process, the six-month resubmital, and they can defend why or why not. And if they don't want to change anything, and we want it, then we don't approve the secondary, second submittal. I mean, that's how the process is working.
If I may, when we were here before for conditional rezone, you guys made it very clear that you weren't gonna give us any input, we had to adhere to what you guys had said that you guys already outlined it. My understanding of the PUD is exactly how you outlined, is we get more feedback of what you guys are more passionate about. So we're showing you, yes, this is what Kroger ideally would want, but when we hear from you guys, we can then adjust to make sure that we, you know, everybody's happy.
This is what Kroger wants, this is what we want, and you guys have the opportunity to defend the reasons why.
And then, for example, like with the fuel signage, the pricers, we have like, we're shown on the canopy, we're shown on the monument sign, it kind of gives you an idea of what each one looks like. So, yes, we can eliminate some of that stuff, we know that there's some pricers that maybe we don't need there, but this, it gives you guys a visual of what the different options are, so then when you guys give us our feedback, we can then adjust.
I just think we're spinning our wheels and we're debating signs at this point.
Yeah, I would, I'll just add to it real quick, you know, I guess to level set where we're at, all of these are good points, but when this first came to us, myself, including, you know, giving feedback, it was very high level. I think my feedback was something like, "This is a box on a lot." You know, we didn't even get into signs, we didn't get into any of that. So out of fairness, they took it back and they changed it and they made, you know, a second, more detailed conception here that meets, and the big feedback we get is, was, "This has to meet the intent of our master use plan." Now, we debated those merits earlier, right? Some of us feel it meets it, some of us feel it comes close, but they came back with, you know, changing it all up with that idea of presenting it there and looking at our community benefits. That was the feedback we gave them. We didn't get to signage, we didn't get to the placement of a tree, we didn't get to those areas, and PUDs go back and forth. Now, a little surprised that, you know, we just popped in there the Kroger standard and, you know, but I get it, they're a business, they want to move forward with, you know, things that, you know, the project's already complicated, if they can just pop their standard in, you know, why not? But they also, I think, probably have some understanding that this will be a little bit of an additional feedback session. So, you know, this is a preliminary conceptual point in time that we're at, and while we have given them feedback, the feedback, in my opinion, is very high level, so I don't know that we would be able to, you know, they made the choice and we have every right and privilege to say, "Look, no, because of the signage, I don't think we should move forward." But I also think we have the ability to say, "Look, if we agree, you've made it forward conceptually on where you want to go, you've listened to our high-level stuff, and, you know, now there's some things here that we think you're gonna have to address or remediate", and we don't have to discuss inches and heights, but we can say, "Look, don't like..." I mean, one of my feedbacks would be, "I think your fuel signage, we've been really hard on all gas stations in the city, it should just comply with our sign ordinances when it comes to fuel, like, easy peasy, just make it comply." Some of the other signage on the building, we have had discussions with other, you know, depending on scale, setbacks, all of that direction. So, we can have those conversations now, but I think that, you know, we're trying to give them direction because you can't spend, now I'm not trying to be empathetic to the petitioner, but any petitioner, you can't ask them to go spend $200,000, $300,000 guessing. You know, that's why we have the preliminary review. Like, is it worth our time, is it worth their time? So...
I guess I would only rebut that with, based on that, the feedback and guidance should be comply with our ordinance. Period, full stop.
What part of our ordinance?
So if we can limit strictly to signs, or we can go with the whole thing, but if we just want to limit strictly to signs, it's okay, our feedback is comply with our ordinance, and if we're saying, "Okay, that gives them the feedback that they need, they can come back in six months", then I'm okay with that, because the hope is that they, to your point, will have reduced this list to half of what it is, and then the stuff that they really need to fight for is what comes back.
And PUD allows us to do that.
Yeah, it's not a rebuttal, it's actually an affirmation of what I'm saying, I think, Commissioner Gantino.
Fair enough. Okay, and so, I would, you want to comment? Okay, I lost my train, it's out there, oh, yes. This is before us now, if we have statements we want to make about the signage, then I think we should make them, and because I feel that way, I'm gonna make it right now. I don't, I think, given the scale of the building, all the signs on the building are fine, I wouldn't, my vote would be I would go for that. The two monument signs, the pole sign, and the four extra fuel signs, no, I would not approve of that, that's my feeling.
And it's fine, there's discussions gonna happen, we'll get the resubmital in six months. They'll accept, we'll accept all the signs, but we want those two monument signs fine, we just raise them off the drawings.
Well, I would comply size-wise with it.
Whatever.
Yeah. All right, so, just to get back to the process here, I did think, walking in here, that we could approve a preliminary PUD and have them come back in six months, but your comment was that we've gone too far, it's, we're beyond that, right? Even though it gives, you gave us the option here, you know that, right?
Yes, I do. You made, the point that I was trying to express earlier is that preliminary PUD is generally focused on the use or uses and the general layout. They've given you far more than that, you've given them feedback, you absolutely may give them preliminary approval. Preliminary approval generally doesn't involve this many drawings and details and time and money, and it doesn't even come close.
Okay, as a practical matter, we appreciate that. Mr. Ellison?
Yeah, I'm gonna give this a shot, based on reading the paragraph that I read before and the way I understand it, I'm gonna move the, moving for preliminary PUD, based on the drawings and the feedback we've gotten tonight and the discussion we've had at the table, which would allow the petitioner to go to the city commission and also come back within six, after six months to either incorporate or not incorporate the contingencies that staff has listed in that. And then when it comes back in six months, then we make the final determination of whether it goes forward. That's my motion, I think, is that, does that work for you, Joe? Okay.
Let's also take a look at the suggestion.
The process move forward.
Okay, before I ask if there's a second on that, I just want to say again that the recommendations, though, was if you're gonna recommend it, then the signage and the lack of public spaces are gonna be as they were on the plans, that's the recommendation, because there's an assumption that we're approving it.
They didn't even have to submit the signs on this submittal.
But they did.
Site plan, they did.
But they did, so, so we're gonna lock them into it? I mean, they submitted signs, they've got a list of things they need to change, that's part of this document, that's part of that motion.
I believe, I believe the site plan, they gotta give us the signs.
Say what?
I think for a site plan, they're supposed to give us the signs. So I think they have to give us the signs.
The final PUD agreement must incorporate signage.
Yeah.
Or reference that they'll comply with all of the sign requirements.
This is the preliminary PUD, there's a difference.
So there's a motion.
Okay, the motion is to approve the preliminary...
You need to support on that motion.
Well, I'm gonna restate it.
Okay.
The motion by Mr. Ellison is to approve the preliminary PUD with the staff recommendations. That's the motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Second by the mayor. Discussion.
We should also note that the petitioner should incorporate a lot of the discussion we've had tonight, take, you know, take those, it doesn't need to be part of the motion, but I would advise them to take that discussion and include it in their revised plan.
I understand what you're saying, is that, that's a proper thing, that the petitioner's heard it, it's not in the motion, but they heard it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just reverting back to the language of, you know, item D, and the eight or nine contingencies that we have in there, it clearly states, "The final PUD site plan shall comply with the zoning ordinance as well as other applicable ordinance except for the following", so we do need to strike, in my opinion, eight and nine, which is the outdoor spaces as well as the signage, because by approving it based on the report we have, as it's shown, we're good, we agree, and I don't think we do at this table.
I agree with Mr. Cooper myself.
So do you want to make a motion?
Can I?
Well, we gotta vote on his motion.
No, we can make an amendment.
We can make an amendment to the motion.
I would like to amend Jim's motion to include striking items eight and nine from subset D, which is the, what is required on final PUD site plan.
And I'll support that motion.
Second by Mr. Ellison, okay, we're gonna, any further discussion, we're gonna vote on Mr. Cooper's amendment. Okay, all those in favor of Mr. Cooper's amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, so we got a new motion, we got amended motion on the table, which is to approve the preliminary PUD with the staff recommendations, striking D, eight and nine. That's the motion, okay? And we already have a second, right?
Yeah.
Because he amended it. Okay, is there discussion, further discussion on this? Mr. Mayor?
I'd say, yeah, I mean, I, this has been a little wonky, and I think maybe not for the wrong reasons. I think we had a petitioner that came in front of us and put a plan forward, they took the feedback back and made a lot of conceptual changes that undoubtedly will, it's a much better plan in my opinion, that's why I supported it. I think that there are still open issues that need to be discussed, and that is familiar and acceptable and part of the PUD process. I think it got a little wonky for the fact that if there was less detail here, the preliminary, and you don't want to send a message to petitioners like, "Please hold back, so we don't know what you're doing", you know what I mean? So I think we want to be careful not to punish what I think is a good behavior on a petitioner to say, "Look, I'm gonna try to give you everything, because I want the feedback, you know, I want to understand, I want to have a back and forth, and if, you know, if I don't show you what my intentions are, you know, down the road, you're just gonna have, it's gonna be in front of you often and it's gonna annoy you, and it's just gonna be a big problem." So, I don't fault them at all, but it does create a little bit of a weird situation here, but I think that, in this case, we've protected against the signage, which I agree with the chairman, you know, on the, especially the fuel stations, and then I also agree on the building itself, makes sense, this is familiar for us, we've done that before. And so, I'll be supporting it, because I think, you know, it does meet what we're trying to do, it is a big investment opportunity, they've made, I'll say, considerable efforts to talk about our community benefits, they've made some proposals that need to be codified, but that's okay, we can get that codified in the PUD, that's part of the record. And I believe that, that overall, I think just outright rejecting it because there's a few, you know, things that need, that are open-ended, and sending a recommendation to say no is not appropriate. I think overall, it's a $50 million project, we look at the entire site plan, we look at, I mean, I, some of the stuff we're talking about, although it's not minor, I wouldn't consider it major, so, I'll be supporting the motion.
Are you done?
Are you?
I'm gonna call the question.
Okay, the only thing I would say before we... Okay, the only thing I would say before we, we vote is I do want to remind everybody that because the motion incorporated the recommendation, that means that the traffic study has to get a period view, because that's in the recommendations, so that's in it. So, all right, let's do a roll call vote, starting down here with Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
No.
I'm a no.
Yes.
Yes, and I'm a yes, so it's one, two, three, four to two, motion passes, congratulations. I don't know if we're going to see you again, I think we will, you'll come back here, right?
The rest of you folks in the audience.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Rest of folks in the audience, you're welcome for the lesson on PUDs.
All right.
Yeah, I know.
Alrighty. Next, whoops, what did I do with this? Oh, here it is, okay, next order of business is new business 4B, this is a public hearing on SP 251215, 31555 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Murphy, if you've got any energy left, can you give us a preview?
This vacant property is located on Woodward Avenue, it's in the general business zoning district. It wa, it's vacant right now, it famously was Pasquale's for many years. The property, as noted, the property that fronts along Woodward Avenue is in the general business zoning district. There's actually a public alley to, that bisects the property. And then there's a small sliver that's in the one-family residential zoning district on the opposite side of that alley. And it's been approved for an accessory parking lot. The, some of you, many of you, may recall in 2021, the petitioner was in front of you and received site plan and special land use approval to construct a roughly similar type of project, they never moved forward, they never obtained permits. So they're back in front of you tonight to construct on the site a building on the north side as well as on the south side of the property. They're proposing, both, both buildings are one-story, the building on the south side of the property is approximately 4,500 square feet in size, and it would be occupied by a dine-in restaurant, a big boy. And that would also have a drive-through facility, I'm going to zoom in on the, the site plan that's provided. They're proposing a drive-through facility on the south side of the property. They noted that it's for orders that are placed ahead of time, they didn't indicate whether that's associated with, um, actually, there is a menu board, I apologize, there is a menu board in the stacking spaces associated with that drive-through facility. It obviously exits out a one-way drive onto Woodward Avenue. In the center of the property is a 30-foot wide two-way drive aisle that leads to a central drive aisle and parking for both buildings. The property, excuse me, the building on the north side has two tenant spaces, one is a retailer, one is a restaurant. All of the uses are either permitted or special land uses in the general business zoning district. And the, all of the uses combined require 92 off-street parking spaces, 96 are provided, so they have a slight surplus of parking. Petitioner is proposing additional landscaping in comparison to what currently is absent at the site. They're proposing 15 trees in the Woodward Avenue right-of-way and some screening walls to separate the parking lot from the adjacent sidewalk along Woodward Avenue. I'm going to specifically refer to their signage. And we do note that simply because it's, it's such an excess of the ordinance requirements, so you're, this approval is, is, is not associated with their signage, they're not asking for assigned variance tonight. That's a separate ordinance that they would need to come, make an application to come back to you to ask for variances. But it was so substantial that we simply wanted to point it out to the petitioner, to the public, and to yourself, planning commission, to, to note its, its worthiness of identifying that it certainly would require variances in the future. So tonight does require a public hearing since it's a special land use request. And after the public hearing, we did not receive any public comment that's attached to your report. So sometimes we do receive written comments that are provided to our office, we did not receive any comment through our to this one.
Okay, so if I can just make sure I'm clear, because this is the way I understood the staff report and I understood you right now, the special land use is really only because they have a drive-through?
That's correct.
And one for that, we, they wouldn't need a special land use.
Correct.
Site plan is a different thing, but the site plan doesn't include that massive roof sign?
Correct.
Okay, all right, any questions for Mr. Murphy before we call the petitioner up? Petitioner, please come on up and introduce your team and tell us why you're entitled to the relief you're seeking.
Thank you, everyone, hello, Mr. Director, Mr. Chairperson, Mr. Mayor. My name is Michael Wiley, this is my colleague, Ali Shai, we are the Business Development Managers for Big Boy Restaurant Group. This is our architect, Mohammed Hadla of Hadla Design. And it's exciting to be here because my old, my old home of Catalta in Maine got a call earlier tonight. So it's fun to be back in front of, in Royal Oak, but here for the first time. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to discuss our site plans for what we plan to be Big Boy's new flagship location planned for Royal Oak. Our goal here is to make this a design worthy of Woodward Avenue and worthy of the location. You may, or may not know that while Big Boy was originally founded in California, for the past 38 years, Michigan has been our home, our headquarters, and our commissary, all of our food production is all in Metro Detroit. But despite the majority of our restaurants being in this area, in many ways, in people's consciousness, the center of gravity for Big Boy is still on the West Coast. And part of the reason for that is that those restaurants simply have the classic Big Boy design that people still associate with our restaurant. That is the reason why when media companies reach out to us about filming at a Big Boy, they want to go to California. When people reach out to me for meetings, they expect to meet in Burbank. Our goal here in establishing this new flagship restaurant, a new drive-through concept for Big Boy that we are developing here in Royal Oak is to move the center of gravity to Michigan where it should be. As a Michigan-first company, we see Royal Oak as the ideal place to build a showpiece restaurant that adapts the iconic architecture of classic Big Boys for the present day to attract visitors from across the state and beyond. And so that's our goal, and that's why the signage is there, based on some of our older designs, some of our historic designs, classic designs. Now, of course, we're here mostly for the site plan today, but I wanted to mention that, just to explain why that's in there. We're very excited to work with Royal Oak, we've modified our initial proposed plans to better align with the city's standards and code requirements. In the few instances where we have not modified our plans, we respectfully submit that the elements are integral to the building's design and essential to establishing this not just as another restaurant, but as our flagship Big Boy. And now our architect is here to address technical questions about the site plan, and we look forward to answering your questions.
All right, are the questions for the petitioner from the panel, or do you have more to your presentation?
I don't have any more, I'm just here for questions.
Public hearing and get that out of the way.
All right, I'm going to take the suggestion of the wise Mr. Ellison, and I'll open the public hearing aspect of this application. If anybody from the public would like to come up and speak on this application, please come up and do so now. Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing, bring it back to the side of the table, Mr. Ellison.
My first question, anytime I get a request like this, is, is the speaker. You've got the, you've got your drive-through in the back, a speaker facing the houses behind it. What, what, what things are, have been happening, I know that a while ago I was told that they've changed the design of those things, that they don't broadcast as much noise, but I want to know that this is going to be silent or very, very low, so that we don't disturb the neighbors right behind you.
Yeah, I can speak on that. Mohammed Hadla with the architecture company, Hadla Design Architects. The speaker will be very quiet, and there's also a masonry wall behind us that'll buffer some of that sound. So I don't believe that the speaker sound is going to be.
Yeah, but I find, even when you got the high wall up there, sometimes you get a bounce whack.
Yeah.
Speaker doesn't, they bounce off this wall, that bounces off the building.
I don't have much info as far as like the decibel level of the speaker, but I can, if, you know, if that's something that I, to be honest, that wasn't something I put any thought into, was the speaker level, but we can keep it.
Get something that you can adjust so it's.
Definitely, yeah, yeah, it's something that we'll address.
Yeah, that, that's.
I, I've been going through drive-throughs lately, and I'm having trouble hearing the people out of, out of the speaker, because they are so low now.
I can't go anyways. No, I, I, it's, it's a nice plan, I like it, and it's good to see that property get used again, it's such a, such a vital piece of property on our Woodward front scape there. And yeah, it's going to be nice to have a Big Boy back. We should have two of them, let me have one of them, so.
So yeah, can you just clarify the, the menu board and the function of the drive-through? The staff report indicates that it's not, it doesn't function as a traditional drive-through, it's simply just order pickup. But with the menu board and speaker there, is it going to be actually functioning as a traditional drive-through, just for clarity?
Yes, for clarity, this will function as a traditional drive-through menu board, everything, people can call ahead if they like, but it will function traditionally.
Other questions for the petitioner? I have one, I have a comment. It doesn't look like your lighting that you've got, the units you've got here are shielded lights. I, myself would say, I think, I think one of the contingencies, you have to comply with the lighting ordinance, and your lights have, your downlights have to be shielded, they can, you cannot be seeing the light source, and they have to stay on the property, so that's something that you're going to have to comply with.
The lights should be shielded, if, if they're not, then that's a mistake, so we'll make sure that they will be shielded.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for the petitioner? All right, the first order of business here is to vote on the special land use, which is for the drive-through. And by the way, just a quick question, is there a difference between, in the ordinance, between a drive-through and a pickup window? Because I noticed like Ronin has a pickup window, they don't, they're not a drive-through, is there, you treat those different, or you treat them the same? Just curious.
We do, we do, especially in a downtown setting, yes.
Okay, so this, of course, is a drive-through, that's the point of the special land use. Is there a motion on this, further questions for our attorney, for our planning director, petitioner, each other? Commissioner Gantino. Second by Mr. Ellison, is there further discussion on this? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, special land use is approved.
Thank you.
Next issue, site plan. Do we have further discussion, questions for the petitioner on the site plan?
I'm of approval of the site plan with the contingencies as listed, the six contingencies as listed.
There's a second, second by Commissioner Gantino. So the motion is to approve the site plan with the listed contingencies in the staff report. Is there further discussion on this issue? All right, well.
I have a question.
Be careful.
Yeah, be careful, you're, you're. You, you.
Never mind.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to call for the, a voice vote here, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion's passed, site plan is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson.
We've had, we've had petitioners get up and shake themselves.
It's approved at this point, I was just curious about which contingency.
All right, they're in the staff report.
Okay.
All right, all right, congratulations, we'll look forward to seeing, seeing you next time. All right.
Thank you.
Next order of business is.
What's your schedule?
I'm sorry?
What's your schedule, what are you guys, sorry?
We're not sure yet, we were waiting to kind of see what happened today.
Well, now that we, come on.
We're hoping, we're hoping to, to break ground in the spring, so that's a good schedule.
Better get it out for bid right about now.
Yeah.
The bigger question is, what are you going to do during Dream Course, you've got that big parking lot.
Oh, that's, that's my, that's my favorite thing to talk about, but I won't waste your time right now. We're, we're very excited about this, here's Dream Course.
All right, very good, next order of business is a site plan, SP 220508, 1638 East Lincoln, this is a revised site plan. Tell us about this, Mr. Murphy.
Certainly, in 2022, you approved a site, you approved site plan approval to allow the existing building, which is a chiropractor's office, to be expanded to the north, closer to Lincoln Avenue. They also expanded their surface parking lot further north towards Lincoln Avenue. And the requirement was that they extend the existing 30, 30-inch high, 36-inch high screening wall. So that's shown in this photograph, I'll zoom in on it a little closer. There's an existing screening wall that separates the parking lot right directly at the property boundary adjacent to the sidewalk. And your requirement as part of that contingent, contingency of approval, and you had an extensive conversation with the petitioner at the meeting, was to extend that screening wall all the way to the end of the expanded parking lot. They've expanded the building, they've expanded the parking lot, they failed to expand the, or extend that screening wall. And they were in conversation with staff on numerous occasions. They are proposing not to install that masonry screening wall, those, to extend it to those two additional parking spaces that they've installed. Rather, they want to put in an ornamental metal fence, so. Staff had, had noted to them that it was a very specific contingent, discussion and contingency of their original approval that the masonry screening wall be extended. They had proposed, again, a metal picket fence in place of that. Staff has the ability to help them gain compliance, that they were able to put in at least a three-foot wide of landscaping, 30, 30-inch high boxwoods, some type of landscaping that would have met that screening requirement, that buffer at the property line. We would have probably given them a sign, a signature of administrative approval. But the exist, the proposed metal picket fence doesn't provide any visual barrier, and it's certainly, because it's right at the property line, with all the snow we've received, your cars coming and going, a masonry screening wall is far more durable item versus a opaque picket fence. So they applied to come in front of you tonight to ask not to extend that screening wall, but rather to put in the picket, opaque picket fence.
All right, I'm a little confused, why is the, why is the boxwood area bubbled there, because that's going to be on the, that's the north side?
The north side, there's plenty of room to provide landscaping and meet the screening requirement and have a safe distance between, have it screen the parking lot from the adjacent public right-of-way, the sidewalk. But there is no ability to do that along Lincoln.
Okay, so just, so I'm clear, if I, just so I'm clear, the petitioner is not proposing not to put in the boxwoods along Lincoln, they're going to do that?
They have indicated that they will.
But they don't want to put in the rest of the masonry wall?
That's correct.
The pressed concrete masonry wall that this guy is. Okay, is the petitioner here?
Why? I mean, is it just cost?
That was, that was what was expressed to us. Yet the building is constructed, the parking lot has been expanded. The only things that haven't, that still remain are the screening requirements, the actual landscaping along Lincoln and the masonry screening wall along Campbell. Okay, very, very slow to actually completing the approved site plan. 2022.
Four years, yeah.
That's why they're back in front of you tonight.
Got it, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
So, I mean, the petitioner isn't here to discuss, I don't hold that against them for something like this, to discuss why, but I'll tell you, I've said it before up here, I think concrete screen walls are just blah, and they get hit all the time, they look, I walk by this with my dog, we go on our three-mile walk, sometimes we head to town, sometimes we head this way. And I don't know, man, like, they're just hideous. I understand we need to have barrier protection to prevent people from backing in and hitting people on the sidewalk if, you know, boxwoods or a picket fence or something like that, it's way more aesthetic. I don't, I don't even know if light issues at night are even an issue anymore, because most of these things I see, the SUVs, you know, shine over them anyways, so. I, I mean, I, I can't speak for them at all, but I imagine the, they, they put some money into the building, it looks.
It looks nice. It was proposed at one time to be a fireworks store. We're lucky to have this. And, um, I, I just, anything we, I mean, I'm on a personal, I wouldn't say admission, but anytime we can, you know.
So make a motion.
I'm on your case tonight.
I'm throwing it out there too, but I want to hear what my colleagues have to say because maybe that motion would be modified.
Commissioner Gantina?
I, I tend to agree with you. I think the concrete screen walls just don't look great, but what they're proposing on the north side looks fine. I do think it's going to look a little weird that they've got the concrete wall that then transitions to aluminum fence, but that's not for me to, to judge. It's their property. If it looks weird, it looks weird. I'm inclined to give them this relief based on the fact that they've already done all the other improvements. They're, I think they're, excuse me, um, to, to clarify the reasoning, at least what's indicated on their site plan is, um, owner was concerned about cost, ability to match appearance of existing wall and constructibility without demolishing portions of existing sidewalk and paving. If there's a concern about damage to the right-of-way and the sidewalk, then I think that's a reasonable justification to maybe try to go with an alternative plan.
Does he want to not put anything in there?
Nope. They want to put an aluminum fence in there in lieu of.
A picket fence really wouldn't screen the lighting, but it would close in the parking lot.
He's going to sink post and dig a full trench footing, 42 inches deep.
It just, just reminder, we get these arguments all the time when we require someone to put in a 30-inch concrete screen wall. I don't want to do it, it's going to look ugly. And so we don't, we still make them do it.
And it still looks ugly.
I mean, I, I agree with you, but I don't think that's the case here because there's already an existing section of wall.
No, I, yeah, I think, yeah, the, the light, the light penetration there is not a big problem. Across the street is a grocery store, so.
Um, I, I would say there isn't, just piping up here, there really isn't room to put boxwoods in there that, like there is on the north side. It's, it's either, it's either going to be the concrete masonry wall or some other wall that is.
It doesn't matter because the first person that misses the left turn is going to run over anyways.
The, the, the wall is not positioned right next to, you know, the car, there's parking blocks there. I don't think, I don't think there, there's a lot of danger that the wall is going to get knocked over, but, um, the, the point is that on the drawings, they've told us what their concerns were. I don't, if we're going to, this is like a hearing on the brief zone, if we don't get to ask them.
How did you guys make this one?
Uh, I'm going to go ahead and, um, move approval of the revised site plan as indicated on the revised drawings.
Is there, um, is a motion by Commissioner Gantina to approve the revised site plan as, as presented?
Sorry, revised landscape plan.
Landscape plan?
Site and landscape plan.
Says site plan on mine.
Oh, there's two. There's, I guess we approved a site and landscape plan. They've submitted a revised landscape plan.
This just scared the shit out of me.
Okay. Revised landscape plan.
Yeah.
Is there a second? Second by, uh, Mr. Ellison. Okay. Further discussion on this? Everybody's quiet on the right side? Okay. Well, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Petitioner, wherever you are, your relief has been granted. Next order of business is other business. The only other business that I'm thinking is tomorrow, we've got to be here at 6 o'clock to hear about, uh, what are their names? Clarion or something like that?
Clarion.
Okay. And I, can I just pipe up? I don't, don't want to keep people here, but I didn't get to ask questions because we ran out of time, but I have to say, maybe you know the answer to this. Um, the product is sort of the, uh, the GIS. I know how to use GIS. I use it all the time. I go, but I know how to use the, the zoning ordinance, but the two of them together, I'm not aware of this happening anywhere. Is this new? Is this state-of-the-art? Is this something that that guy, is the only guy doing it or are they all going to do it?
It's more commonplace now, but there's obviously a structure to, and time and effort to create it and then to maintain it.
Does it cost to maintain it?
There is. Staff's time and/or consultant's assistance, but it's something that we've identified in the RFP that is a bare minimum that needs to happen.
Oh, we, we were requiring it?
Yeah.
Well, then I guess they're all going to give it to us, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, that was sort of my question, but.
I think the, the one individual that showed you the live interaction probably had a little bit of a twist from, from the basics of it. So.
What are the basics?
Uh, the base, uh, the basics are, are ever-evolving, but the basics are clicking on a property and identifying text identification number and address and the zoning of the property and perhaps linking to applicable sections of the zoning ordinance. His danced a little bit more.
Okay. So in the end, we're looking, we're going to, right now, our ordinance is mostly text and there's like 12 illustrations at the back. This time, we're going to have text, I hope, and illustrations and a chart. And if you go to the zoning map, you're going to get this information. That's what we're planning on?
That's what we're hopeful for. Yes, absolutely.